For an application to be -- oh, good, thanks. For an application to be approved, you need the applicant needs the consent of the majority, and all four of us will be voting tonight. So tonight, we have one application, 20 Parkway Road. You know, this application has been before Design Review and Planning Board, and Planning Board has passed it along to us. If it is approved tonight, it will go back to planning for final approval. Okay, so who is going to present the application? Does that mic work?
Do you think we need a gentleman? Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Yeah, I think we're good.
Yeah. You may not be heard on the TV thing, but that's...
Peter?
I'm checking it out.
Okay.
There's John.
Oh, there's John.
All right.
Good time.
Okay.
Perfect timing, we just started.
So our fifth member, John Brown, is joining us.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Stephen Archinelli from Veneroso Curdo, Schwarzencurdo. On behalf of the applicant who's here with me this evening, Warren Kraus, and also Stephen Secon, the architect for the project, is here with me as well. Hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving, it's good to see everyone. Just for the record, and as the board is aware, I submitted my statement of principal points, which address the applicable standard of review with respect to our request for area variances. With the board's permission and in the interest of time, I will not read them aloud this evening, if that's acceptable.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. We would like to thank the board at the outset for visiting the property, and I would also like to point out that the applicant has gone out of her way to meet with her neighbors and members of the community, and has also... And in response to those outreach efforts, I believe a number of support letters were submitted by neighbors and members of the community, which are part of the record. Hopefully, the board had a chance to review those letters and support as well. In terms of this project specifics, the applicant proposes to demolish the existing three-story dwelling structure and utilize the existing foundation to construct a new two-story structure with an attic and also with a basement. The structure will contain three three-bedroom units with two and a half bathroom, and they will be townhouse units. The structure was purposely designed to be an attractive, contextually appropriate structure, flood tolerant, given the property's location in a flood zone, and which also includes a standby generator, drainage and stormwater management plan, and a sediment and erosion control plan. We respectfully submit that this project, once complete, will be an improvement to the Parkway Road, to Parkway Road and the neighborhood, and represent an investment in the village aimed at upgrading and improving existing conditions, especially those located in areas victimized by flooding conditions, and it is our hope that the board will agree, and in granting the requested variances, enable this process, project to proceed. The project requires six area variances pertaining to lot size and lot depth, front and rear yard setbacks, building coverage, and FAR. The necessity rationale and analysis for the variance requests and their associated impacts are, as more fully set forth in my principal points. However, I would like to make a few brief and highlighted comments with respect to them, which I think I can place into three groupings. With respect to lot size and lot depth, these two variances are existing and non-conforming conditions that relate to both the size and shape of the land itself, having nothing to do with any of the improvements or structures that are located thereon. With respect to front, the front and rear yard setback variances, these variances are triggered by utilizing the existing foundation in order to avoid expansion of the structural footprint, and by the creation of a rear deck and front porch for each dwelling unit, which are confined to portions as opposed to the whole of the proposed structure. The rear decks are consistent with other homes in the area, are not visible to the general public, do not abut a residential neighbor to the rear, rather Metro North Railroad, and are not detrimentally impactful upon any neighborhood, neighboring properties. The decks further serve as a mitigation measure related to use and access of the rear of the property during flooding conditions. The front porches and their location in the front yard are consistent with the majority of the homes on Parkway Road and will blend in seamlessly. Finally, with respect to FAR and building coverage, due to their extent and nature, do not stand out as obvious design elements, or will be noticeable by the general public as they will essentially be baked into the completed structure, and are not significant enough to render the final product excessive, out of character, or otherwise detrimental to the neighborhood. Lastly, we would like to thank the Building Inspector Paul Taft, Village Staff, Representatives, and the Planning Board for their assistance, comments, and suggestions, the product of which is now before this board, and we are hopeful that this board agrees that the applicant has been responsive to the villagers' concerns, and also sensitive to the variances requested. The intentions behind the design of the dwelling structure were to conform to the existing and general context and character of the community, to be practical and market appropriate in terms of the final product, to ensure feasibility, and last but certainly not least, address and mitigate the flooding conditions that have historically impacted the property and expect it to occur in the future due to flood zone vulnerabilities, weather patterns, et cetera. I think, you know, as I'm sure the board is aware, this project has, I guess, been a long time in the making, and we're happy to be here with a revised project that was a product of, I would, I think, conservatively say considerable discussions and negotiations and meetings and revisions with the village staff, its third-party consultants, and then once again, we want to thank the village and its staff and representatives for their help and assistance with the project. I do have, I have nothing further relative to the balancing test. Steve Secon is here. With the board's permission, I can turn it over to him. He can walk the board through the design elements of the proposed structure, if that's something that the board would like us to do, or we can answer any questions that the board may have.
Well, just one question. Will you, or be addressing, will somebody, walk us through some of the changes you have made in this project from the beginning?
Yes, Steve Secon, the architect, could do that.
Okay, Steve will take care of that. Thank you.
Shall I turn it over to the architect?
Sure.
Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Steve Secon. This is essentially the fourth edition of the project. The first started off as basically renovations to the existing three-family house. Unfortunately, over the years, the third unit, which was in the attic, fell into disrepair and didn't really keep the certificate of occupancy, so it became a two-family unit. We looked at that as a proposed use, then said, we tried a four-unit scheme that Paul helped guide us through that was too large before it ever came to any board. Then came another three-unit scheme that was deemed excessively large, and we shrunk that by roughly 15 percent. And what's before you now is really the fourth edition. So we've gone through different iterations, and also, you know, lots of guidance from the village, as well as their consultants, you know, helping us with some stormwater issues and relocating driveways and so forth, and also, as Steve mentioned, you know, trying to make something that's contextually appropriate, yet still serves the needs of the owners and the market. So the number of the changes that were made, for instance, we're flipping driveways in order to get better planting buffers, and, you know, help to soften up some of the side views from the street, also to minimize the number of curb cuts in order to make something that's a little bit easier in terms of safety, and also in terms of on-street parking, so we don't gobble up more curb cuts than are necessary. Some of the neighborhood and contextual analysis was helpful for us to understand what was appropriate versus, you know, what is simply regulated in the tables, you know, for the zoning. So some of the things that appear, you know, larger or variances for setbacks, when you study the whole area, and also because this is such an unusual actual area, being on the cusp of the river and the zoning district, Metro North, and then going to, you know, a different multifamily in Midland Gardens, this is not like a pure street, pure district that has, you know, some of these different kinds of influences. So what we have before you, we feel in terms of massing, in terms of intent, in terms of appearance and utility, flood tolerance, you know, we think is a fairly rational solution, and be happy to answer, you know, any further questions on revisions, or use, or that makes it a little bit easier for you to digest.
Well, just one question again. I don't know if this was Planning Board or Design Review. You, I believe you moved a garage or removed a garage, and you shrunk the size of the project? Is that correct? Could you talk a little bit about that?
Part of that was to help reduce the coverage numbers.
Okay.
You know, partly, you know, infiltrating the water, if we have less impervious surface, that seems like a plus for the neighbors as well as the applicant, you know, so that the water percolates into the soil quicker. We also changed the surface of the driveway to be all...
Great.
Beautiful. Thank you. So we also changed the material of, and I know this is not necessarily your purview, but this is information, that, you know, the driveways will all be pavers, again, to help infiltrate water. You know, the mechanical systems will all be up in the attic. I know the homeowner, Lauren Kraus, has endured two floods in the last three years? Yeah. And I'm not talking about, like, I'm talking about like over knee-deep in the basement, you know, and this is obviously not a good situation, you know, so part of, you know, the remedy is to make everything a little bit more flow, you know, flood tolerant. You know, there'll be flood vents, and there'll be, you know, sump pumps and other mitigation measures, because we know this is going to happen again. It's not a question of when, you know, it's how frequently. You know, so we're keeping the first floor elevation, which is still, you know, a sensible height, and, you know, in Ida, I think the elevation, you know, came up to the middle steps, you know, so that inundated the basement to probably about five feet. You know, so it's trying to get ahead of these issues, and then, you know, make sense of, you know, some of the other, you know, objectives of the project.
Will that have any impact on the other neighbors' flooding situation? Is that mine?
The, so if we look at the aerial view here, so here are the tracks running roughly, you know, north-south, and at the lower corner, the Bronx River, and, you know, this is all in a FEMA flood zone. It gets a little worse, you know, as you go south, you know, just is slightly lower elevation.
Yeah.
And currently, there's no flood mitigation on the property.
Mm-hmm.
And there's no flood panels. So if we talk about volume displacement, this is, this is a big win, because this, you know, lets the water in versus trying to keep it out and getting inundated. So with respect to the neighbors, this is a win.
Okay.
You know, partly because of having, you know, the structure with flood panels, and secondly, having two banks of chambers under the driveway.
Okay.
So they'll be, they're what are called storm bricks. They're like Coltex, but they're just a little bit easier to modulate and couple together. So, you know, that is also going to help quite a bit, as well as the gravel that surrounds them to help infiltrate the water.
Okay.
One question. I know we discussed this briefly when we were over at the site, but I guess I'd either forgotten, or what are we doing about parking?
So each unit is required to have two off-street...
Right.
Parking. So we have the owner's unit, which will be here at the south with the two cars, front to back, and then the two other units will share a widened driveway where they'll park, you know, their vehicles.
Okay, so two curb cuts, front to back, parking...
Yes.
For each. Okay, so this is the way it's going to be set up?
Six off-street parking spots in total.
Okay.
So in regard to a couple of the variances, is it correct to say that the variance requested in the front yard is being triggered by those front porches?
Yes. It's front porches, as well as the existing foundation that we're trying to salvage.
Okay.
Yeah. So you can, you can see the outline of the old steps.
Mm-hmm.
And then, you know, from the bottom riser of the new steps to here, looks like three treads, so that's maybe two and a half to three feet different. What's triggering it, though, is the, the small landing and the roof overhang.
Right, right, right. That's right, because the existing is non-conforming, because it's off by a foot. Okay. And what about the back property?
So, so this is an existing small room addition that we're trying to salvage, and, you know, so that, in effect, when we put a deck in the most rational place, it pushes it back further toward the rear property line, but in effect, really, this is a large retaining wall.
Mm-hmm.
Paul, is it possible to take a peek at the site section? That is, a couple sheets lower. Yep, right there, right, yep, right there. So this is a section through the property as if you were looking to the north with the, whoop, yep.
Right, okay.
So the river, the river's down here, this is the property, and this is Metro North. So there is this additional, here's the property line, and basically, there's another 10 feet till you get to the retaining wall. So, you know, will the commuters be adversely affected? Eh, I don't think so.
So that's, that's what you're saying, that's land that's probably owned by Metro North, that 10 feet? Okay. So it's actually eight plus 10 to the retaining wall?
In a...
Okay.
And again, where that's measured to is the worst-case corner of a deck.
Right.
And the reason we went with decks, of course, is also flood mitigation, so there's less fill in the area. So it's just, you know, on peers. That's the area we were just...
You saw, I saw you had a lot of letters in favor of this, from all your neighbors, right? So that's great. And you had none against, right? Nobody...
They would let you know.
Sure. Great?
What was the square footage of the garage that, I mean, approximately that you're removing? Because I know it's not included in FAR, because you get a credit for that?
Yeah, for about 400.
So it is about 400? Okay. Okay, so that's, I mean, again, you don't get credit for that, because under the existing code, the current garage is not counted in FAR, right, Paul?
Up to 400.
Up to 400, which was the size of the garage? Another question. What is still outstanding, if any, with Design Review? Are there any open items?
No, we met with Design Review several weeks ago.
Mm-hmm.
They had suggested the reorientation of the driveway, you know, with the narrower one going to the south and the wider one to the north. They were also interested in potentially shifting the three units further back, which the Planning Board didn't see any value in. And they were also, you know, asked for further refinement in terms of some of the material choices, which our next addition will have some more clarifications on.
Okay.
As well as some landscaping concerns that we've also addressed.
Okay.
How long is it expected to take, this project will take, how long?
Built?
Yes.
If everything goes smoothly, eight to 10 months. Supply chain hiccups are still evident, so, you know, I'm going to say, you know, 10 months to a year.
Are you including the demolition, start to finish?
Start to finish.
Okay.
Okay.
And if you got approval, when would the demolition begin? I mean, I guess you have to, well, sorry, you have to go back to Planning Board, but, you know, subject to that approval.
Subject to that approval, then the Building Department, you know, has another look at it. So if we were in the ground sometime in April, that would be great, and it's also availability of good contractors.
Right.
You know, so if we said April, May 24, finishing up, you know, March 25?
Right. Okay. Well, but presumably, much of the equipment, or some of the equipment you can put on that vac, park on that vacant lot, is that correct? I mean, you know, rather than on the street, because that street's tight.
Right, right. Dumpsters and, you know, temporary construction entrance, yeah, can all go on that, that north side, that's all vacant.
I also see in the plans, you've planned a lot of landscaping, right? That's nice, that looks great. What you've done so far, but also on the big planning, that's already in works. It's going to make it great.
Yeah, I mean, we're planning privacy, you know, hedges, you know, at the north and south bounding neighbors, and then, you know, some little more ornamental kind of trees and shrubs at the front. And they, of course, have to be flood tolerant.
Anything, John?
No, I have none.
Anything? Any, I don't see anyone from the public? Any questions, comments?
I'm my neighbor.
Oh, that's a neighbor.
There are two.
We're just thrilled to see the progress. We're just thrilled with the progress.
And you live where, sorry?
She's the closest house.
Sorry. My name is Nicole. I'm in 16 Parkway Road, so I'm the next-door neighbor, so I would be most impacted by this project.
Right.
And I'm so thrilled to see it come this far, and I hope to see it break ground soon.
Mm-hmm.
I'm very excited to see such a great new construction in our street, bringing back the value. I think this street hasn't been appreciated enough, and it has great potential, and we're waiting for people like Lauren to move in and start developing it, and I, I'm just optimistic of what other developments we will follow to bring beauty into our street. So, thank you.
Great.
And thank you for cooperating and working so diligently on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions, comments? All right, if not, let me propose a resolution that the Zoning Board of Appeals grant an approval of the following. Section 310-11K, FAR allowed is .362, existing .297, proposed .474, variance required .112 or 1,209 square feet. Section 310-11, it's minimum required lot area, 12,000 square feet. Both the existing and proposed is at 10,800 square feet, variance required 1,200 feet. Minimum required lot depth, 100 feet. Existing and proposed, existing and, proposed lot depth is 78 feet, variance required 22 Section 310-11D, this is minimum required front yard is 20 feet, existing is 19.1, proposed 14.6, variance required 5.4 feet. proposed 14.6, variance required 5.4 feet. Minimum required rear yard is 30 feet, existing is 18.8 feet, proposed 8.5, variance required And last section is 310-11F, that's maximum building coverage. Coverage allowed is 25 percent, existing is 24.2, proposed is 33.3, variance required 8.3 percent or 900 square feet. In addition, the zoning board recommends that the Bronxville Planning Board work with the applicant to determine target dates for A, demolition of the existing property, and B, completion of construction and receipt of certificate of occupancy. Let me start with you, Marty. Your thoughts?
I think, first off, I really appreciate the opportunity to see the property and get a real feel for what's going on there. The flood issues on that street are a legend, and particularly with the changes in the environment, and so I think this is a very responsible and upgrading step. I agree with, I think the neighbor said it best, so I'm very much in favor of this variance.
Thank you. Jenny?
I agree with Marty. I think it sounds great. I think you covered all the five concerns we had really well, very thorough, your approach, and I think it's just a great investment in the neighborhood, and I look forward to seeing it and the rest of what happens on Parkway also. I prefer.
All right. John?
I'm totally in agreement with it. I want to see the property, and I think it's well thought out, and it's going to do the area a big plus and very beneficial. I'm totally in favor of the variances.
Charlie?
Yeah, we spent a lot of time on this. We went to the project, it was a, you know, very comprehensive package and application, not nearly as much as the applicant has spent revising it four times, but, or three times. And generally speaking, I'm not in favor of increasing footprints in our small village. However, in this case, the applicant is offering quite a few benefits. Flood mediation, which I think is a, here, remediation, I don't know, which is a huge offer. I believe that what she intends to build is going to be, is going to add to the neighborhood. It's going to be much nicer than what's there now, and as the neighbor said, I think it's going to hopefully start to improve the, you know, the neighborhood itself. So, in light of that, I think the trade-off is worth it, and I would vote in favor of the variance.
Great, okay. And I concur with my colleagues. I'll just add one other point. One of the things we look at at our committee, it's important, is setting precedent in the village when we're granting variances, and our feeling is, or at least my feeling is, that's a good precedent for the neighborhood and for the, for the village. So, congratulations. All variances approved. Okay, so that.
Thank you.
So, good luck on this.
Almost there. You're not there yet.
You've got, almost in the end zone, but that concludes our tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Hey, Christine, you said that this might want in.